Can I ask, can we go back to, to pillar two, soon to be pillar one, the safety? Do y'all want to help? Do you want to create the goal, the verbiage for the goal?
For the safe? Are we talking about safety?
Yeah.
Create verbiage for the goal. Are we talking about the mental part we were just talking about?
Yeah.
Well, I think we landed on going to some of the student. So is that the verbiage you're looking for, going to student grades?
No, what is the goal? So what is the goal that we're gonna add the goal that discusses mental health, yada, yada, yada? So what is, and we can wait for Devi and Roseanne.
Are you going off something already that's already been written that you want revised? Or you just want goals?
So remember we talked about we wanted to add a goal five to the safety pillar that addresses this, that addresses the sensitivity training, the trauma-informed training, the mental health component?
As we're thinking out loud now, you know, we've been talking about also the diversity training. All that's different. You're not at that point right now, right? That's not where you are. You're not there.
No, I guess, no, I guess that would probably fall under a different, a different pillar.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay. Just.
So Roseanne, what I've asked is, you know, we talked about adding a goal under safety that addresses the trauma-informed care, the mental health of our students. Do y'all, do we want to, can we come up with a goal, what the goal is?
So currently, there's four, he's talking about adding a fifth goal. So well, it looks like goal one, provide safe school environment. Goal two, ensure schools activities free weapons of drugs. There's pretty, so the goal itself is pretty broad, right?
Yeah, like goal four, be prepared for crisis.
Right. So I would assume goal five would be something broad like that about continue to place an emphasis on additional mental health services for our students.
Which could be there. Could we be more specific in training? Could we put that?
That would go underneath.
It will go underneath there.
Look at, look at what's there now in view, because I was like, what are we talking about?
Okay, let me see where we are.
So yeah, so the goal itself, seeing what they have written already seems to be pretty broad. So if we're gonna add a goal, I'm open to edits to that, but that would be where I would lean.
Now, what page are you on there?
Page thirty, page thirty-four.
Yep, so this one, so this one is the, you know, and I was kind of a little confused when I got here about that this was past tense, but I think I see where we're headed. So this one, strategic plan update in 2021 year in review, safe start, strong finish. So while this focuses on our pillars, the verbiage that we're looking at currently seems to be past tense. It's more like.
So I'm looking, I'm on the other, I'm on the other document.
On this document.
So this doc, the document you're looking at is basically a narrative, a written narrative of the report out that I gave you all for each of the pillars.
Okay.
The other document is the plan as it exists today.
Gotcha. So either way, you still got the same goal five, four goals under safe environment, right?
You're on thirty-four?
Look at thirty-three and thirty-four though.
Yes, yes, yes.
Not in the black sheet.
And so what I, what we've said is, I think that we wanted to add a goal five on page thirty-four. And I'm simply asking what, what was it? What is the goal?
All right. So you want to write down what I said and then let them edit it? And maybe we create the starting point?
Yeah. What'd you say?
I don't know. Somebody, Denver, what did I say? It was really good. Something about placing emphasis on additional mental health resources for our students.
Looking at the wrong. Yep, look at the black document, page thirty-three.
I'm looking at the black document.
Page thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
So goal one, goal two, goal three, goal four.
Goal one and goal two, barely is provide safe and, okay.
Yep. So we didn't have a goal there that addressed mental health. So I think that's what we're trying to add, goal five.
I got you.
Yes. Now, y'all take it and chop it. Do whatever you want, but at least that gives us a starting point.
Well, I think if you take that and then as the staff works on the actions that go under that, if you want to word smith it, that's fine.
That's fine.
What I had under my written thing for today was, it's what I've said on the board, really. Under pillar one was act, an action was require training of staff and students in trauma-informed practices for de-escalation of violent and disruptive behavior and decrease suspensions and expulsions.
So that would be under?
That would be an action.
That would be an action under that general goal.
And I would like to add the action, take guidance from our students on
What they need.
What they need.
Yeah, what they need and in a way that they feel safe and comfortable, you know? But yeah, take, get, take some guidance from our students on how, what they would like the additional services to look like. Of course, she's got it. She's writing her way over there.
You've got mine written.
Can I offer something for us to consider?
Three and four, really. Three and, but never.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. As I was thinking about this when I was gone, the engaged community pillar? And y'all may have already got.
We're not there yet.
I know we're not there yet, but I'd like this to inform perhaps our conversation that instead of the engaged community, we would call it engaged constituencies. And that would be able to take care of us broadening the net. So those constituencies are both internal as well as external. So when we talk about morale or professional development would be the internal constituency. But if we talked about engaged community, it then allows us to broaden the person that we, that we would be engaged with, that would then be able to inform some of, some of our goals that we've talked about in conversation. That's also external stakeholders as well, but internal stakeholders as well. And I don't know that we have any context by which we talk about its internal constituencies. And that might, if we were to agree to that, then that could inform our work moving forward, even in the other categories.
Mr. Brigens, I'm just warning you, you just thought we got derailed while he was gone?
We'll be fine. We'll be fine. We're talking over here, so we're jotting down the notes, so when we get to that.
Right. No, I think that's a great, I think that's a great idea.
We'll be able to serve back to it.
Okay, we're coming back to engaged communities.
So I mean, we're still in the same environment, but I just thought that as we
Right.
If we agree to make it engaged constituencies, then when you talk about quality resources, there's some, that some of this stuff might move to pillar four instead of pillar three, where we don't capture it, that's all. We're going to stay where we are. But if we know that we want to make that change, then
Okay.
That's in some of what we talked about, we know will go in that area rather than areas where it might not quite fit.
Just throw some breadcrumbs down the road so I know where y'all.
One more thing, like looking at goal three, reduce student suspensions and expulsions. Some of those things, since this was written a long, you know, while back, have already been implemented. So I would assume that the actions, we're going to update the actions to reflect what we still need to do, not necessarily just leave them in there because they were in there eight years ago.
Before we get to three.
All right.
Are we done with two?
I don't know.
Or I shouldn't call it two, because it will become one, safe environment.
But right now, we are.
Okay.
Well, I'm just making the suggestion on not only looking at the goals, but when it comes back as a draft, to look at the actions and update those.
Okay. All right. So quality resources is pillar three.
Okay.
This is where I put one-to-one district. The devices of us funding, devices for all of our students.
I put the expansion of Rickards and Fairview High, Rickards High School and Fairview Middle School.
I put we provided more flex dollars to schools and improvements, capital outlay improvement.
Slow it down.
I need a full, I need a full timeout. So I'm gonna go back to Board Member Jones, so we can, as we're, all of us over here writing, we can capture it. Okay, go ahead.
Expansion of Rickards and Fair, Rickards High School and Fairview Middle School.
Expansion of Rickards High School and Fairview Middle School.
It's a renovation, really, isn't it? Expansion, I guess.
Expansion, renovation, expansion, renovation. Or investment in the expansion and renovation of Rickards High School in terms of quality resources.
Then the first one was one-on-one.
One, two, one.
Computer devices.
And then I think the third was coming from here.
Provided more flex dollars and capital outlay improvement dollars to schools. Furniture, fix, furniture fixtures and equipment.
That's on the quality resources, right?
These are victories.
Other victories.
Yours is good.
Salary increase.
I don't know if I have any victories.
Salary increases to all levels.
Go back, go, take, take a look at your goals. Highly qualified teachers, administrators and staff provide state-of-the-art educational technology materials, facilities. Those were the, those were the two goals. Our victories inside of our goal.
I think a district, a district-wide learning, a district-wide learning management system with Canvas.
Well, pretty big salary increases across the board. Like last year was $6,000, I mean.
Does that fall under that category?
Quality resources?
Isn't it?
Or is that physical stewardship?
Oh, okay. Never mind. I think you're right.
Good part about the change with the engaged community, we now take care of human constituencies, human investment.
We didn't get to engage community yet.
Right. I'm just saying that might be a rhythm.
I'm sorry.
I didn't want him to hear me chewing, but okay, I'll keep it down.
Anything else? Any other victories? Provide highly qualified teachers, administrative staff, state-of-the-art education, educational technology, materials and facilities. And you can even look at the bullets under each goal. Okay.
Next strategic plan. Can we not have so much narrative? I think it's, I like the, I like the page thirty-nine and forty on this one.
Can you use your microphone, please? Thank you.
I just suggest that we have a little less narrative in the next strategic plan and stick more to the goals and measurable objectives and actions.
I would absolutely agree with that, but I figured I was the only one who probably felt that way. But it's, there's a lot.
Well, if, if, if I may offer, not language for language sake, but I don't think there needs to be anything left to conjecture. And some of, and I don't know that the narrative is not clarifying. You know what I'm saying? I just, I don't want it to be sparse and then be unclear.
Yeah.
So more is better, maybe.
Part of the issue is that, I think, if I'm not wrong, that each pillar is drafted by a different staff person, right?
So they write differently.
Well, or, or express information differently. And so we may want to have somebody at the end to kind of edit. Yeah, we have our resident English major.
Dr. Gail's going to speak to that process.
All right.
So the pillars, I'm sorry. So the pillars are written by different people, but we do try and craft the language so that it flows. I'm taking down notes of what you're saying, so that we bring you the draft. You can tell us yea, nay, or what have you. But yes, ma'am, they are written by different people, but we do try and merge it.
As an example, you could probably tell which one Jillian wrote and which one Merrill wrote, right?
Graphics and, you know.
I'm sorry, say that again. Graphics.
Graphics and bullets. And they were saying it's a lot of narrative to read.
Graphics and bullets. I have it.
Thank you. I'd like to suggest, Annette, the county strategic plan is beautiful, very well presented. So we might want to look at some other
I agree.
strategic plans and see what they look like. Because I, I don't know, I, I'm not a reader and I know that's a bad, I'm a math person, okay? But I glaze over when I see all these words. I just, I mean, yes, they're necessary when, when necessary, but if they're redundant or repetitive or unneeded, then we need to monitor. And I like the idea of, you know, bullets, charts, things like that. But I do remember the counties is really well done.
I read theirs as well.
Really well done.
I agree, Ms. Brigg. I do, I do, I do.
So we want them to be clear.
Clear and concise.
And concise.
For example, what the superintendent gave us today. And, you know, this is the current status, right? He gave us bullet points. We've done this, we've done this, we've done this. Like that is easy to read, but the way it's written in paragraph form in the current plan is not. So if we need to do a status, a current status, to me, this kind of thing is easier to swallow.
So how are they writing today's strategic plans? Are we in vogue? Are we in step? Is this where we're going, I guess? I'm just asking for clarity. How are the best written strategic plans today?
We ought to have someone that's a professional writer at this. Okay. hired to do this.
You want, I think you're, you know, you're, you're expressing what you want to see.
Okay.
You want to see, you want it to be clear, you want it to be concise. And, and again, I think you'd want to capture what, you know, Board Member Jones stated, you know, regarding that you want to make sure that nothing is missing from the narrative. Nothing, there shouldn't be anything in there that is open to interpretation. So I think it's just a, it's just, they'll, they'll be able to combine a couple of variables to come up with that product.
Professional document that we're proud of.
And the most important things that, you know, once it's done, we have to continue to read it.
Yeah.
This would be true.
And review it. That's going to be the most important piece. And I think, again, part of this process is that you will have the opportunity to see the, see the strategic plan and make comments when, when we reconvene. But she's taken that information down in your input, so they can get it accomplished on the first.
On that, it should have, the, whatever we put down as the action should have something that's measurable. So in the end, we come back and say, this was our goal, this was our objective, and this is the result.
Yeah, they, they will make sure that the goals and the objectives are, you know, it's that SMART acronym, you know? Specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, time-sensitive. And again, that's in the, in the lane of Superintendent Hannah and his staff.
Does action step go in anywhere? Action steps, is that considered the what? That's the?
Yeah, I mean, the, the actions under each, if they want to, they could put, you know, what action they plan to take under each objective to meet that goal. And even when they do that, I'm sure that, you know, they'll put in there, you know, maybe within six months or by this time.
All right.
So, but that's, that's in their domain, their lane, their airspace.
But the good part about it, and this is what we did in our office, and we're getting ready to do ours. When I first came on at O E V, we had a strategic plan, which we then, was then adopted by the intergovernmental agency board of directors, which is the city and the county commission. Once we had the strategic plan, we then took that strategic plan and then created a work plan whereby all those goals were achieved over the course of five years. And so, for example, as me as a manager, that's what success looked like for me, because I was able to then show that I had met the goals under my area of responsibility. And subsequently, that's how I was evaluated, that's how I received my raises. And this goes back to what you were talking about, the data part. So then, it's that type of empirical analysis, based upon, informed about a strategic plan and then the subsequent work plan, that you say that we moved the needle towards this area of, this area of responsibility and what our expectations of were are easily, are readily defined and seen, and then the executable actions that are associated with the same. So we may want to think about that course of action as something to think about. As in the superintendent armed with that, he knows who shares in that responsibility, both singularly or collectively. And then that's when we, so when we then come back to this meeting, not arbitrarily assigning grades to say what we have successfully done, but he can point to most specifically the box had been checked, right? And so I think that's a way of looking at it. And it's, and it's devoid of emotion. It's empirical, it's data-driven, right? Just something to think about. But that's the way we do it in O E V. Because, not that I'm bragging, but I'm up for a raise because of it, so.
Well, toot toot.
Toot my horn. Blow, blow.
Ah, hell, you.
So what does call, if we were to meet this goal, quality resources or this pillar, what does that look like? What have we done? What do we need to add? What do we want to see? To say that, you know, this pillar is, we've completed, everything in the pillar has been built.
Use your microphone, please. Teachers have what they need to teach. Media specialists have what they need. Parents, perhaps? I don't know. That became an issue certainly during COVID. Students have what they need, whether it's devices or content from textbooks online or in hard print. I've heard Mr. Jones talk about, you know, what the facility looks like. You know, you can go to some schools that are newer and they look all bright and shiny. And then you go to Leon that I love, and it's old. You know, I don't know if that matters at Leon. But the point is, the physical structure matters. That's why he talked about the expansion of Harts, I mean, I'm sorry, help me, Fairview and Rickards.
Sure.
The
And we need to put Riley on there, too.
I will. I'm proud of our, our athletic fields and the astroturf.
At those schools with them.
And you can, I mean, if you want to rename the entire pillar, I think we keep it in the same area. There's quality resources, is that how you want to describe?
It's kind of vague, isn't it?
I mean, so what are we talking about? Quality resources? What do we mean?
That's what he's trying to get us to do.
I know, I'm trying.
That's what I mean. And it was probably done just for that reason, you know, to be vague. But there's no reason we can't change it, change the title of the pillar.
Equitable resources.
Like Dr. Jones, like Mr. Jones wanted to do with the next one.
What? All right, nobody but equitable resources.
Equitable resources.
I like it too, but we have to have board buy-in to have it be considered. I heard that.
Well, then I would say equitable and quality. Quality equitable, help me, but both.
Equitable and quality.
And I think the vague word is resources. What are we identifying as resources? Are we talking about the physical plant? Is that, is that?
That's resources.
Is that, is that the only resource we're talking about?
Textbooks, computers.
Teachers.
Buses.
Things that.
What about human resources?
We can get that into engaged constituencies.
Human resource.
How do we summarize that?
Answer this question, and it's the fill in the blank there. Quality resources. I don't want to say this. Blank is quality resources. You have to define, I mean, it, there should be a picture. So student achievement, I could see. You know, I could think of, you know, assessment grades, graduation. We talked about a variety of things. What picture comes to mind when you say resources? And like I said, it's, it's so vague that it is, I mean, it could be almost anything. So what is it that you're really trying to accomplish under that pillar?
So if you look, if you look on page thirty-nine, it really, I think it does it. It speaks to what Roseanne said. Provide highly qualified teachers, administrators and staff. So it talks about our human resources. And then it talks about, the second goal, it talks about the technology and the textbooks and the facilities.
In the art.
Right.
So if we understand.
The goals are there now, to me, look good.
Right. So if we understand that, is the pillar, is the name of the pillar okay?
That's on page thirty-eight, thirty-nine. So who are we writing this for? Quality resources. When I'm John Q. Public and I'm driving down the road past Pine View, and I think of quality resources, I'm looking over and I see a school, okay? That, that probably is not where you're trying to go with this. So we got to, well, it's one way.
I think what Superintendent just said, if goal one and goal two really defines it, because one is the human resources and the other is the material, educational technology, materials and facilities.
And that's why the question is, is quality resources the name that you want for the pillar?
I like putting equitable in there myself.
I voted for equity first.
So you want quality and equitable resources? Equitable and quality resources?
Equitable and.
It doesn't roll off the tongue, but it does say something.
How does equitable, put equitable, is that a goal or is that a category?
That's true. You could put quality resource and then put equitable in the, in the, as a goal.
Okay.
I'm just asking.
So it sounds like we are, right now, we are where we are. We have arrived at where we are.
Maybe we could describe it as capital resources, right?
Because human resources.
Well, but you got human capital and you got physical capital. I don't know. I just, I just think the word resources is what kind of messes me up, that it doesn't describe, it's, it's more vague. It's not a clarifying word.
How about investment? The stars, what, how?
How about investment? Quality investment.
It may be okay. I mean, when you say quality resources, when you.
You think of things.
You think of the things.
Yeah, you do.
I think it's fine.
It's fine.
And I don't think new equates to quality.
No.
No.
No, it doesn't.
It's because it's bright and shiny, doesn't mean it's.
Okay, so is there something we want to add then as it relates to equitable resources?
Maybe as a goal, you know, under that. I mean, it's, it's hard to measure that, but maybe, maybe it's not. And you can say, you know, these improvements were made to make this more equitable.
I see that people are pondering, so I'll wait for the verbiage to follow.
My apologies. I've got a crisis going on at the job I just left yesterday. Apparently, my number two walked out a minute ago. Yeah. So I'm sorry, but I'm like, I'm a little shell-shocked.
Number three's up.
Next. So my apologies. I will get back in, y'all, just give me a minute.
No, no, no problem. No problem.
I'm like, why are they calling me? I don't work anymore.
I know, I know, I know.
But I love, my heart is a little broken, so I'll be.
You know, I think it's, when we talk about equitable resources, it's easy, I guess. I truly believe that all of our schools get exactly, we don't treat any schools differently than any other schools when it comes to providing resources, when it comes to providing the best quality administrators, best quality teachers, the best quality, you know? Instructional materials. Do some schools have raised money to do other other things and supports? Yeah, but when it comes to the furniture money, everyone, every, it's equitable across across the board. Now, we can certainly add, if you want to add a goal that talks about equity. And then what do you, what is, what do you put under that? You know?
But, and I'm glad you brought that up. Because I disagree with that. I know that we created a scientific formula based upon F T E where we distributed those monies across the district. However, and I remember my colleague. I'm looking at her. Because she told me that the older schools. Compared to the newer physical plants did not need the same type of investment. And that and that, and I could, as I continue to rail about Title One schools, don't forget. That there are other schools in the district that might not be Title One, but who need those same similar types of investments. And so. So my thing was that, and I and I saw the formula and I get it, and I I appreciate where you were coming from. But when the disparity is so great. Between some, and you named some schools like Kate Sullivan and other older facilities, right? When the disparity is so great for them to get money compared to a more recent school. Using the equitable formula, the impact is not quite felt on the same. And so, so when we talk about. There's, so it's it's this new thing is equality, equity, and then there's a third. Pillar, and I can't remember it right now.
Equity was one, you're standing on the boxes.
Right, but it's equity is quality, and then there's a third pillar, and I think that 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 has to take into effect that just leave. There are still some mitigating circumstances, as Ms. Rasmussen explained to me. Where that it's not just that it's Title One, but then what about the, as she described it, the schools that are in the middle, that are on the cusp. Like a W T Moore, which isn't quite Title One, but it's not. And so we don't want to miss them in that, too. So I I was, I'm just, and I know it's not, this is, I'm not, I hope I'm. Providing some clarity or if I made it worse, but it's my intention that. I've, even in my own district, Bond does not have the same physical plant concerns that Pine View does or Sable Palm. And so the fact, the investment, if we just use an F T E as our measure, I guess we're sometimes we need to. Review the count, the measure, the 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 metric or the rubric by which we make equitable decisions. Let me summarize it in there.
And you know what? I don't know what I want to do with that, though. I hear it and I think I understand it when you talk about metrics and rubrics and such stuff. I do, uh, but quality and equity and that human piece that goes in there of. Designation of where the dollars go and who the leaders are and how the schools. Facilities and plants end up looking and being, I think all of that's a part of this as well. I I just really do. So. When we define quality, what did we say quality was? Did anybody tell me? Can somebody, I can look it up, what's quality? What do we mean when we say quality? Quality resources means teachers, administrators, staff. Is that what it really means? It's right.
Now I'm doing what you're doing. Is that the picture? That you get? When you say quality resources, is that the picture that that you get in your mind? When you say quality resources, what picture comes to your mind?
I think money.
Okay, so when we talked about equitable resources, that's what Board Member Jones went to was the financial piece. But we've already talked about the, we've mentioned the fact that you have other types of resources.
Yeah. And so do we look at quality without looking at equity? I just, yes or no, or you don't know, or do what we do, which is, how can we not?
Just asking. How can we not?
Well, and if you're going to talk about equitable resources in the area of the of finances, then the question, the next question I would ask. Do we put that in the last pillar? The fiscal stewardship and transparency pillar?
Okay.
I almost thought about just, we should combine those two, but.
And make it one? Yeah, well, it would if we combined them.
But equity is.
And let me, let me ask a question. You said you were thinking about combining them. What what is your reason for combining? Not a right or wrong, just.
No, no, just my thinking was a lot of these decisions about where you put the money determines. What the quality is going to be. And so it's all part, the resources, you know, we start with how much money do we have? The big thing. And then how are we going to distribute it in a way that? Brings equity. You know? If you recall, we did that field trip thing and we did it in a different way than we normally allocate money. We did it based on need. And so it had a, we use a different formula for equity purposes. To try to make up for some of the inequity that we've talked about earlier, so.
If I may, oh, I'm sorry.
But in some of the, just to finish, but some of the quality is personnel.
Yes.
And that's, I mean.
Which is goal number one.
Okay.
And the principals are paid the same. You know, and so that's not a money issue, that's a placement of resource where you put your your best people. In the most needed place.
All right.
Right, so.
Quality, equity and best placements.
I just had that thought because we were.
We, when.
Just money.
Okay.
When pillar five was written, it was in, you remember Chair Bowen, I'm sure. We were in a difficult time of a lot of. Criticism. And audit findings and people saying that we weren't being transparent and. And it was about our financial systems, not so much how, what we spent the money on. But how it was being spent. So I would encourage you to think about if you want to add. Equitable expenditures or or prioritizing expenditures, that that would go under the quality resources column. Versus stewardship and transparency, where it's more about how do we? Give taxpayers the reassurance that we are being good stewards of tax dollars and.
So you're talking about.
I agree with you.
I think you're right.
You're referencing. Concept that the horse trading. Concept where if you have. If you have resources for this area, this school, this department. And they say, we don't need ten, we only need two. And that's, and another area says, well, you know what? We're allotted ten, but we need another five, you know, and then so you're moving the, you're allocating the resources based upon the need. So I mean, that's one way of looking at it in terms of, you can look at that in terms of money, obviously, and you can look at that in terms of like capital resources. To some degree, you might be able to do that in terms of human resources, be a little, little bit more difficult. And again. You know, it, when we talk about safe environment, pictures come to mind. When you talk about student achievement. Things come to mind, pictures come to mind, assessment scores, data, graduation at different levels. So the question is, when you talk about quality resources, what picture comes to mind?
I don't know. Let let me cloud.
You're going to cloud it some more, you want to say?
Even more, but let me, and and I know I'm going to get slapped. That's okay. I've been slapped before. Okay, let's take a look at new principals coming in. Dollars are given to them, right? We've got old seasoned principals with experience. I mean, old in a respectful way with experience. They get their dollars and they spend them in ways. That their school sites and and other resources that they need. Are placed in a way that they look, they are right, they're all good, everything is fine. We get a new principal perhaps coming in and who really may not understand what equitable expenditure is all about. So when we get questions sometimes as board members, well, I know that the monies were given. And they were given in an equitable fashion and they were fair. How are those dollars spent? And so I'm looking at equity, quality, equity expenditures and and personnel in all of this. Uh huh. You know where I'm going with that. I mean, to me. Y'all know where I'm going with it? Well, let me tell you where I'm going with it. There are some. There are some folk who understand how to spend and use the budget in a way. That's different than others. And perhaps if more training about the use of dollars and these expenditures could be given. We may not get some of the grief we give. Let's go. Get, okay? And Roseanne is looking at me very strangely, so I know she knows, I think, what I'm talking about. So I I don't know how to couch it any better than that, but I think that these things kind of go hand in glove.
One of the things you're, you want to remember.
All right.
As as board members, as we use this, the verbiage, especially when we talk about the pillars. Because the pillars are hierarchical. Not only the picture, but you want to be able to explain it to the public. So if I walk up to you and it's quality and equitable resources. You need, you should be able to give me that thirty second speech where I I understand it. So as we talk about that, you know, and we use these words. The vision and being able to explain it is is important. Because now you have, now we have words on a document that's not clear, going back to what Board Member Jones was saying. Might be concise, oh, yeah, three words, but it needs to be clear. So as we talk about, as we have this discussion, keep that, just keep that in mind. So when you said equitable. If we were to ask everyone, what does that look like? What does that mean? We probably would be all over the map.
Okay.
So we're going to have to, you know, you have to rein that in. It sounds like quality resources. Is pretty much what we're going to go with in terms of the pillar. Now we're looking at. What we may want to see. And what does that look like? Because as Superintendent Hannah and his staff go back, you know, like, what does that mean? What does that look? You know, they're going to say, what does that mean? What does that look like to get a picture? So they, you know, so they can begin sketching and painting it in. And painting in the color. So we have to keep that, just keep that in mind.
Not perception. Okay.
Well, just. I think that equity or equity, equitability and all of that is a standard, I think, that is applicable across all pillars. And I think that in terms of the direction of the district and the management of resources and talent and all of that. There's thought given to equitability. And that that things that we don't show preferences. But that we try to use that as a standard of guidance, even in our own discussions. So I don't know if it necessarily, so it's the goal, so I just don't, I wouldn't put equitable. And quality resources because we want equality and student achievement.
Everywhere, right?
We want equality and that's, and so it's like, like the fourth thing is quality is job one. Well, equality. As stewards of taxable resources is an issue for us that we are using, making, using. Equity, equitable decisions across across all areas of our responsibility in our work. So to put it in the title of any one category means that we would put a greater emphasis in that category compared to all of them. When that's really our standard. And so when we talk about vision and mission. Then perhaps equity or equitability or equality might find itself there that it informs everything that we do.
Okay. Other thoughts based on?
My my thought was to. Put a goal under quality resources. That has something to do with evaluating. The, and I don't quite have the right word, but it's it's like evaluating the. The quality across the board or the excellence across and where where the gaps are. So that when we come back in a year, someone says to us, well, we've really looked at all the schools and looked at the buildings and. You know, these are the places. And the superintendent I know is doing that all the time. Can you, you can say. You know, these, these certain areas need more resources based on our study of.
You're identifying the gaps.
Of the gaps. That could just be a goal, identify the gaps, the equity gaps in our physical.
Good.
Structures and maybe also our personnel.
But when, um.
Well, except for the goal, and then you come later to decide what you want to do about it, but to have a, just a thorough look at that.
What was the name of the study that they did when we adopted the half penny? When they went, we had a team that went around and looked at all the schools.
That's right. Oh.
I don't.
They called it, yeah.
I can't remember either.
Anyway. This is in the superintendent's bailiwick, so it is.
So one thing I think you can, I think, I like what Daryl just said, though. So if you go all the way back to page seventeen. I think, Dr. Gale, we must have spent. A month and a half trying to come up with a vision statement. We had, oh, kind of. Maybe about, maybe a year and a half. But if you go back to the vision statement, you said.
I don't have a seventeen.
Yeah, I don't have page two.
I go from two to nineteen.
Me too.
Which copy should we look at now? The black one?
I have a special copy.
See, they they have that copy, Superintendent Hannah, but for the purposes, you know, all that verbiage that y'all talked about. I didn't provide that today. So the vision and the mission, if you look at the the summary document. From Superintendent Hannah's reports, the vision and the mission is there.
But what's page seventeen?
The vision and mission, right, Superintendent?
Yeah, so page seven, so if you go to. The vision and mission right here that you do have, that's on this. So if you just, because we keep talking about that word equitable. So instead of our current vision, what if we said. Leon County Schools will provide a safe. Equitable, engaging and respectful learning environment, the foster, yada, yada, yada. And then then you put equitable front and center in everything that we do.
So now I'm curious, what's on pages three through seventeen?
It's a lot of verbiage.
Classified documents.
Obviously.
You gave it to us at three meetings ago. And we had homework to do, which some people didn't.
Yes, ma'am.
And you know what? I'm so happy you mentioned that.
So I'll be happy.
It's a message from the school board. You know, it's a superintendent's message, the message from the school board, an executive district profile. We have thirty thousand students and yada, yada, yada.
When this was written.
So it's it's the, it's the priest, it's the fluff stuff that goes ahead of the plan.
And we thought this was wordy. There's a few more pages.
And 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 you think we're about to move from this. I'm just going to say again, until the record, I'm sorry.
Mister, Mister Superintendent, Madam Chair. And I'm I'm sorry that I didn't, you did receive two copies of this. But, Mister Superintendent, if you look on page seventeen. With the belief statements from the vision and the mission, and no, you don't have this in front of you, but it is in documents. That you've seen and approved before, we believe in equity. Leon County Schools fosters an environment that encourages all stakeholders. To close the achievement gap. Maximize achievement for every learner and provide equitable opportunities for all.
Okay. You gave us that before. We just don't have it before us right now.
And in the belief statements, then it's in there twice.
All right.
You want, I can pass this around to you.
No, no.
I'll be happy to pass this around.
If you say it's there, I believe it's there, which is.
Okay, so we're good there, that.
We're good.
That is there, right?
Yeah. So what, Superintendent, you were about, you were referring back to, you said, like something Daryl said on page seventeen, then we got sidetracked.
Because what Daryl was talking about was embedding it, I think, I don't want to speak, in the, in the vision. Of our entire district was was making it front and center of everything that we do, not just. Resources, not just, you know, across everything that we did.
Making equity front and center, as I was talking about.
And 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 you know, not to interrupt, but to interrupt, the first comments I made today, I stated that. Equity is the lens by which all of my strategic pillar suggestions can be seen. And I think that's where we still are, because that's what he just said in a different way. I just put it at the pre kindergarten level. But I I hope that we will continue to look at it in that way. And we can, I think, move forward.
Anything, the last thing that we added to quality resources to identify gaps, or anything else? You want to see as it relates to quali- quality resources?
You know, I I don't have it before me right now, but when we start to think about the age of schools and such stuff, you know. At some point, there was some committee somewhere who's taking a look at that. And I guess this came to my mind when I heard Fairview and Rickards being offered up as. What did you say? Having them looked at as.
That was our success story, part of our.
I I've forgotten. I, I've forgotten. But anyway, to make certain that the, um, facilities are constantly, um, upgraded. That sounds so small, but there are some other words that could be used, uh, kept current in, in, um, usability, for lack of another term. Because you know, I, I, I can think about Riley and my need to have it turned from where it is facing to the other side of the street, which is not going to be dealt with here, but it's on the record again.
Okay, so we're really looking at resources, all, all of our resources. Identifying the gaps in resources and maybe some needs. So needs could be, you know, capital improvements.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking.
And the et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Let me tell, let me tell what I think, my, my problem with this category and its title is that we use an adjective to describe it, right? Quality resources. Student achievement is just straight, a straight noun. It's devoid of any, any, so what if we just called it plainly what it is? Human and physical resources, right? And then when we talk about describing what our expectations are in that category, quality being one of them, quality is an issue that we would provide quality resources, right? Of both human and physical resources, right? That we are recruiting the best and brightest, that type of thing. Engaging and retaining the best and brightest talent. Then when we talk about equitable, that there's equitable, equitable, equality in our facilities and our, all of our, you know, but then I think that, that the name of the ti- the category itself, I think, does not describe it as, as our chairwoman said. If I'm riding down the road and I happen to glance on our website, what does quality resources mean to me? But human and physical resources is clearly explained.
I'm gonna disagree with you for a second, just because I'm looking at our next one, which is engaged constituency. That describes what you want. It doesn't say just constituency. So if you want to, I, I think an adjective there, quality resources is what we're about.
Well, quality, well, quality, human and physical resources. But I think we, resources does not define, is, is, I just think we need to define resources better.
Okay, so physical and human resources, I don't.
Yeah, I know the difference. I mean.
It's fun.
Well, now, now I know the difference. I'm talking about the people that you described who just ride down the road.
That's, that's right.
And you wanted to make sure that our public was clear.
That's right.
And I was helping to bring us to that point where we had the clarity that you saw.
Yes, I appreciate that. Receive it, transparency for how we use these people's dollars.
So how about quality, fiscal and human resources?
Put it together. Quality, say it again, Ms. Woods, please.
It's what he said. Quality, fiscal and human resources.
Quality, physical and human resources.
Physical or fiscal?
Physical.
Not the money.
P-H-Y.
We got the money and the fiscal transparency, but the physical resources we're talking about, the facilities, the physical plant, the textbooks, materials.
I'm aware. I was just trying to make sure what the word was.
I'm gonna let Dr. Gail, she brought up a good point. Let her tell, tell you what she just told me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. So the previous, um, strategic plan from the board, it actually had seven goals. Why did it have seven? Because at the time, um, which is now Cognia, but Advanced Ed had seven, um,
pillars.
Categories, yes, sir. So then when we did it again, the one that you're looking at right now, there were five. Advanced Ed calls it quality resources, and this is something that they do worldwide. Now, Advanced Ed has three areas. And this area is called resource capacity because it takes care, it encompasses everything. So that's just a background.
So we'll have six more weeks of retreat.
Okay. Let's just, let's just.
Let's just go with what it is they're calling it because we're gonna be looking for accreditation soon. Would that make any sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Write it down. I heard, oh, yes.
Resource capacity is really gonna confuse. Yeah, let's do, I like what Mr. Jones, let's do quality, human and
Physical.
Physical, capital, whatever, resources.
That's fine. All right.
Quality, human.
You could call it capital resources.
And capital resources.
Instead of physical, how about that, Daryl? Daryl, how about capital resources? Human and capital resources. It says capital, that's, that's all your things.
Yeah.
Instead of physical.
I'm, 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 whatever. Physical, physical is more clarifying for me, but if you want capital, I'm willing to concede.
I'm not gonna argue with him in English. No, he's the language person, so I'm not gonna.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I mean, I'm down for whatever.
All right, physical and capital.
Human.
I mean, human and capital. Quality, human and capital resources.
That took a half an hour.
Snack time.
We can get off on that.
All right, now, anything under quality?
Uh-uh.
Capital resources in terms of visioning that you want to, Hannah and his staff?
As long as we have somewhere about identifying the gaps.
Identifying the gaps and the needs.
And the needs. I think that's.
Right.
Well, well, then if I, if we're talking about quality, human resources and, and now that we've got the human piece in there, it kind of helps me to think about it in terms of human resources. I mean, and think about it more in terms of what our human resources are. I'm concerned about teacher salaries. Does teacher salaries fall under this? Under human resources? Or does it fall under fiscal, I mean, y'all help me with it.
I think it does.
It falls under fiscal, doesn't it?
I think salaries would fall under fiscal. Now, if you're talking about teachers and the quality of the teacher and retaining teachers and the, and the pool of candidates, then that would be more in this category.
And that's where I'm, and that's where, and that's where teacher salaries is, as you described just there, is where I was going with the issue of salaries. We will continue to have the issues that we have as all districts in Florida have, right? This, this, the, in terms of the persons who are going into profession, until we address the issues of teacher salaries, we will continue to have that problem of people going into the industry, attracting, attracting the best and brightest, being able to make competitive and compelling offers. And for example, one of my priorities is to see more African-American men recruited to the district. Part of that is also addressing the issue of salaries. Fewer African-American men are going into the profession, right? And I just think that modeling of manhood, that, that diverse, um, teacher populations provide for our children, I think is important. But how do we, we, it's hard to remedy that. And it's a, a issue that we've all talked about. We, it's an issue that we all share. But until we're able to deal with the, the salary gap in our district and across the state and in Florida, we will still have that problem. So I don't know where we, I guess, I, I, that teacher salaries is an issue. And I defer to my colleagues in discussion to decide where you want to put it. But we've got to talk about teacher salaries. We also got to talk about teacher recruitment as a part of that issue of quality, human resources.
Okay. Well, it can be an action under goal one. It says, provide highly qualified teachers, administrators and staff. You could put an, an action in there to, you know, what, trying to elevate the recruitment and retention of.
I, I just wanted to be a part of that, our goals going forward.
It'd be an increase in recruitment and re- recruitment, attainment and then retention of whatever you want to, you can fill in the blank. So that's easily measured, you know, in terms of qualitatively and quantitatively. And then the other piece to that was the teacher's salary. You know, then you, the discussion is, you know, how are teacher salaries, you know, determined? And the entire process.
So you're thinking that goes under fiscal and the recruitment retention goes under, uh, goal one?
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you want to do that, I mean, we know that in order to recruit, you have to, you know, I mean, the offer. And the, the offer is all encompassing.
Let me take off teacher salaries, right? We'll put that in fiscal, but to that end, let me tell you what I would like to see in terms of quality, human capital. I'd like us to fortify our more relationships with historically black colleges and universities to increase the talent, the pool of African-American qualified faculty to the district. You will recall, and as I, and if I may remind my colleagues, you remember Dr. Gail forwarded us a list of those who with, with whom we presently have articulation agreements. So I'd like to increase that number of HBCUs.
And others who are willing to engage in that kind of training for black males to come out of them. No, just that, Mr. Jones? You're kind of.
No, it's, I mean, I'm doing, I mean, I'm just saying.
He's trying to get specific. You could measure if you increase.
So, so that, exactly.
All right, okay.
That's exactly.
My one question to the board would be, and it's not related to this, if we're identifying, identifying the gaps and needs as it relates to various resources, do we need to evaluate the current status of our resources?
We've done, we've done that. We did that most recently when we talked, when, uh, when Dr. Rogers did her report, her equity report, she showed us the, the, uh, uh, the status, the data status of what our pro, like a profile of our district in terms of leadership.
Okay. Do you want that in there?
Well, there's already been a, I mean, we already got that measure.
You already have that measure, okay. So it's not, so if I pick up the document, you know, I'm in the public, I pick up the document, I know that's being done. That we are evaluating the resources at Leon County, within Leon County School District.
I think it needs to be an ongoing kind of statement. I don't think it's the kind of thing we do right now and stop. I, I think the public needs to know that we're constantly taking a look at that.
Okay, do you want, only I'm asking, do you want to include it?
I do. Now, others may not.
Even though you're doing it, and because I, when I looked at the resources and then I heard identify gaps and needs in terms of resources. You know, the next, the other step, the other side is to evaluate what you already have.
Okay, and that's a victory, maybe.
But he's saying, I think, put it in your plan, that way.
Do you want it in your plan? Do you want people to know that's what you're doing or to have that captured as part of the vision? Not only we're going to identify gaps and, and needs and resources, we are, we are also evaluating the, the current status of all of our resources.
Well, then I think, I think it should be. I cannot think of why it should not be.
That's, that's, maybe that's just part of that same sentence, rather. Evaluate the status, needs, remedies. But a specific goal was HBCU.
Yeah. Well, yeah, he didn't say that, and that's good.
Like, like Board Member Jones said, you know, you're really doing that. And I'm sure if you talk to the HR department, they, they can tell you, you know. We're evaluating where we are currently in terms of, if you wanted demographic information in terms of recruitment in X, Y, X, Y, Z.
I think, no, what I think is important, based upon what you've described here, it may be, if it is evaluated, it does, one of the things I thought was, was important that you described is that there's the stating of the goal, but then there's the action associated with it. So those numbers in terms of what we saw in the Title IX report we just saw, those numbers are not new to us.
Right.
Right? I don't think there's probably a great gap between two years and three years in terms of that profile, right? There has not, what I'm, there's not been demonstrative action, so I mean, so the evaluation piece is key to be included as a goal.
Right.
And then the subsequent work that comes from that is found in fortifying more relationships with HBCUs.
Okay.
Right, to increase those numbers, right? I'm also concerned about the top talent, what is the, um, the talent pipeline for assistant principals and principals, right? I think that that needs clarifying.
Can you, why don't we have a third goal? There's two goals here. Provide high qualified teachers, provide state of the art facilities. You could have a goal of increasing, you know, minority representation.
In the classroom, period.
In the classroom and the schools.
Yeah. What page is it, Roseanne?
Where are you?
I'm just looking at page 39. Those are, those are the goals and objectives under this pillar.
Let me ask a question though, on that note. Dr. Gail, you may know the answer to this. Weren't we just given a top award in the state for having?
The highest number of principals.
Highest number of minority?
Principals.
Was it just princ- was it just administrators? I thought it was teachers as well.
No, it was administrators, wasn't teachers.
Okay.
It was administrators.
And remember in the Title IX report, when Dr. Rogers showed us the difference, we scored high marks in administration. Our problem was, and that's why I was, the salary issue.
Yeah.
And the number of people who are going into ed, I remember I talked about how when you went to FSU or FAMU's, the Colleges of Ed's graduation pools were enormous. But they've diminished greatly here in recent years.
So why doesn't the goal then be specifically toward teachers? That's what we're trying to get at.
Is that what you're?
Well.
Yes, it can be all teachers, but I mean, but, but I want teachers. And I also want to make certain that we're increasing our minority population as well to ensure diversity and equity.
That's what I'm, I'm saying specifically amongst teachers.
However you want to, however we want to wordsmith it, teachers certainly, because there's a teacher shortage.
No, 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 I'm talking about minority. I'm talking about, why don't we have a goal that we want to increase the percentage of minority teachers in Leon County Schools?
Yes.
And that is a great example of data-driven. We would not have known that had we not had seen that data on that chart that night. And you're right, it stuck out like a sore thumb.
Yes.
That's a great example of what you're trying to get to in all areas, yeah.
Mr. Jones, the, uh, uh, the assistant principal pool, you didn't leave that out, did you?
No, that's why I was including that as well.
Okay, yeah. As, as the kind of training opportunity, we had some kind of discussion about that, leadership, right? Leadership pool, that's what we're looking for. Okay. A leadership pool, okay.
Did we couch up, is this that we're adding a goal or we're just having the discussion regarding what we've already?
I think we're adding a goal.
Okay, and that goal would be?
Increase the percentage of minority teachers and, and.
Administrative staff or something?
Teachers, because that's part of the leadership pool, they're teachers, right? Increase the number of, the percentage of minority teachers in Leon County Schools.
And how do we get to the, the assistant principal piece there? Leadership cadre? No, leadership something.
Well, and I, I, I don't want to say this outside of the, the superintendent. Um, so I'll wait till he comes back to talk, to talk more about my, my issues relative to the assistant principal and principal pipeline. So I'll wait till he's here so that he hears that. I wouldn't want to make that observation outside of his presence.
I was gonna ask for clarification since you said you were gonna wait for two minutes.
He's here, so.
Okay. So the talent pool pipeline, so I, I wanted to wait till you return so that I could make this present, this comment. I want to make it outside of your presence, right? The talent pool pipeline, I, I, I'm not entirely sure if it is widely known or the method by which we, we manage the talent pool pipeline from us, from regular faculty up to assistant principals and onto principals. What is that pipeline? What is this defined as? There are those who believe, and I'm just talking about what I'm hearing, is being an APC, Assistant Principal for Curriculum, is that the method? Or the measure by which a person becomes a principal? Then what is, what is, we, we just now talked about a now administrative category of dean. Is a pro, is a pipeline go from dean to AP to principal? Which areas of responsibility are defined for the, uh, to make that move from each one of the stepping stones to be rewarded? Now, mind you, you're always going to have a greater number of people in the pipeline than you will have schools available as people retire and the like. But I do, and I do want us to talk about what that talent pool pipeline looks like and what do we do as a district to help to prepare to have the types of quality persons on the bench who can make that transition?
Don't we have a leadership training academy still?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a whole process that people go through, they apply.
So what we'll do is, we'll just put a pin in that and I'll bring Shane Seifert in to talk about all we do to prepare future leaders.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there's a whole program for that.
Well, there may be a whole program, but then you've got some people who've been an assistant principal for seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years.
Yeah.
Who aspire to move, and so what is the, so have, have, have they had the types of assignments that would prepare them to get there? Because you've got some, and I know this is a subjective matter, right? We make certain that we pick the persons who will fit best in the right places. But then there are others who are on the bench, who are like, put me in, coach, and so do we say that you had to have been an APC first?
No, no, Darryl.
Or did you have to have been, or, or could you have been, or if you, if you'll be a principal who's been the Assistant Principal for Discipline at all five of your appointments over the last twenty years, and then you don't have what, you haven't had the type of diversity of experiences that will prepare you, so those are the types of things. So if we got an academy that makes that happen, I, I guess I'm not aware of it, but I'm just asked, that's, because I have people who come to me, right? We are, I'm, I'm sure you all do, who are, who are, who say they're standing at the ready, but they haven't moved. And are they, and some who are, there may be some who are resigned to lifetime of assistant principal and may not want to make the move. Right, may be happy to be a strong second forever, but then those ones who want to make the move, what is the method by which we make that, we prepare them to make that move?
I'll use my career as an example. So I was a, a, a teacher, then a dean, and I sat in between Jack Gaskins and Pat Weaver, and I basically did whatever they didn't want to do, so I did a little bit of everything. And in the summers, I would work with whoever the APC was in developing the master schedule. Then I went through an interview process, an interview committee out, out of the district office, and was selected as an assistant principal, and I served as an assistant principal. Then, again, went through a Level Two program to become a principal, and interviewed with a district-wide committee to be, to become a, potentially a principal one day. A lot of assistant principals never aspire to become principals. They are fine in their skin as an assistant principal. But there are others that aspire to become a principal. Some become principals and, and other, and others, and others don't. Now, when you talk about objective, subjective, I don't even know how, how I'm going to say this. Just be, just because you're an assistant principal for five years, ten years, twenty years, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to be a good principal, even if you have been aspiring to become a principal. Does that make any sense?
Yes, it does.
And that's, that's the judgment of the superintendent?
Correct, yes. And about the school and the school community and feedback from committees, the committee that interviews, those applicants that are interested in becoming either an assistant principal or principal. There are some people that aspire to become assistant principal that
They chosen.
don't get, don't get selected, and the same way, the same way as a principal. So, Dr. Gail.
Mr. Superintendent, if I may add, um, for the past few years, we've had a teacher leadership academy for those who aspire to go into administration, where they learn how to carefully look at data, um, evaluations, different things of that nature, so that they can go on that, that campus and help that administrative team. Some of them do aspire to become deans or assistant principals, uh, like the superintendent was talking about. Not all of them do. We will get Shane to come in and talk about the different programs that we had, but I did oversee Level Two for a while, and it takes two years to go through that program. Those, um, people who go through Level Two are exposed, and superintendent and myself, we can talk about that because we had to go through it as well. They're exposed to what it takes for total school administration. So there, there is a, there is a process, there is training, um, and then there's the, the final, I guess, um, making the final choice for who will sit where based upon what that community needs. But I took note, I'll have Mr. Seifert come, um, and give you more of, um, an overview.
All right. And there, and there, Darryl, there are people in all professions that aspire to become the CEO, but they're not CEO material, right? But they, but they, just because they've been there fifteen, twenty, thirty years, doesn't necessarily mean they're in, in, whoever's making the decisions that they're necessarily the right person to lead.
Okay, are we good with quali-human capital resources?
I think we are.
Okay. The next pillar is engaged community as written today.
Excuse me, I have one more thing.
Yes.
And I have not talked about this since I campaigned about this.
Okay.
Incentivizing teaching in Title One schools. One of the things that I hear is a constant complaint from, uh, when it comes time for hiring. And I talked about this even in my comments, right? That teaching at a, moving from a Title One school to a non-Title One school in terms of perspective is seen as a promotion, when really we know that the requirements and expectations for a person who may teach in particular Title One environments may require a different type of skill set because of what we know may have been the student preparedness of the population that you're teaching. And so, one of the things I talked about as a candidate, and I'll be honest, I have not talked about this as a concern of mine, and I think at present, we do provide some, uh, a token compared, do we, don't we provide some type of token for persons who teach in Title One?
It's a hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars.
Oh, a semester, right?
I think the year.
And so...
Um, I'm sorry, Dr. Gail's correcting me, she thinks it's two hundred dollars, one each semester.
And I think that's such that, uh, the principals in that, in Title One schools, right, when, when teachers are looking to move, looking to, and when people are coming into the district, right? I think, I think any way that we can incentivize the teaching in Title One schools that's such that they will have at their disposal the same talent pool as found in across the, you know what I'm, you understand what I'm saying? That it in, incentivizes master teachers to seek, seek appointments. Well, that, this, all, all of my teach, all teachers are good, and all teachers are well-intended, but I think incentivizing pure people to teach in Title One schools, I think will go a long way to increase the number of potential applicants that they have at their disposal.
I think there's some research, and I, and I, that shows, though, that, that money doesn't necessarily...
Nope, it's not money.
It, that makes a difference to people, because I, I would have said that I think there's been districts that have given
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand dollars, and it really didn't, it didn't do as it was intended.
University of Tennessee did a huge study on this. It has to do, the main thing they found was the school climate, the leadership, how they're treated, how, how much they feel part of a team is, is what makes people want to be at a school.
And I, I think if we were to check our history here in Leon County, I'm sorry. If we were to check our history here in Leon County some ten, fifteen perhaps years ago, I believe a part of that was tried here as well.
It was.
It wa, oh, so I am right.
Oh, yeah, ten thousand dollars over at Wesleyan.
Exactly.
I remember the principal.
So here again, is part of keeping that historical record so that we can see where we're working from. You don't know where you've been, you don't know where you're going, so I just offer that to us.
Well, uh, you are right, but I would not have known that history because I am new.
I know, and, and that's fine. No, 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 we're not. All is well.
Okay.
Yes, but it is interesting because that's, that was the road people traveled down, thinking that's what's going to do it, and it didn't. People were like, no, it's not a money issue. Because you're right, it's harder. It's harder.
And I don't think anyone who goes into the teaching profession is out for money. They all have a, a heartfelt motive to help you. It can't be about the money. But also, we've heard studies on the increased testing demands, the other demands that teachers have, the lack of respect from, from, from pa, parents' support. There's so many factors extrane, you know, external to, to salary and anything that we can control.
But I'm, I'm waiting to bring up school climate, but to me, that is the key.
It's like we're segueing right into it.
Okay.
Engaged community or constituency?
Engaged community, and when we get to what we want to see, we'll get back to the, uh, looking at the, at the name of the pillar.
I have a question before we go down the road of changing the title. Dr. Gail, is, is engaged community on the SACS accreditation thing as a topic? Because Darryl was interested in changing to constituency, which I may have...
I think that probably, engaged community probably came from me because at the time, that was a big thing.
And also, it, it was actually on the other one as well, but when you look at the research on how to improve a school district, an engaged community is one of the, um, factors that is measured and looked at.
Is it on SACS or...
Cognia is what it's called now.
Thank you. Is it on that?
It is under resources now. Remember, it's down to three areas, so it's, it's under resources.
I'm questioning if we were to change it to engaged constituency, is that going to throw a ring and does it matter?
Those are your words, and as long as we understand as a district what we're talking about, we're fine.
I, I don't care for the word constituency, not in this, not in this, not in this, uh, context. What about stakeholders? I don't care for that either, because I think community means something so much broader. It's a group of people that come together for the same... And I think constituency, I think voters and people that are in our each district. I think community has just a really positive, yeah. It's, it's people who are, you know, grew up in Tallahassee, they may not even live here anymore. They went to Leon County schools. It just, it extends way beyond the people that just live here, you know? It's, it's not a zip code, it's not, it's just so much broader and warmer term. I really like it.
Well, if I may go back to, because I, I defined why I wanted to change the term, and I think you were out of the room. There's nothing in our, in our categories. I, I said that engaged constituencies would be, one, external stakeholders, the community at large, but then the internal stakeholders. There's nothing that captures our emphasis on issues of climate, morale, engagement with our, our, with, uh, our internal stakeholders, our teachers, our administrators.
Maybe you could just add it to it. Maybe you could say engaged faculties and communities, or engaged this and community.
And I just wanted to capture that group that's internal to us, and there's no other category that talks about our engagement with them. So if we, if, if we create, create another pillar to capture that, because there's nothing in here that gets us to the issues of discussion regarding morale and climate and stuff like that. That's, that's the only reason I thought about constituency.
It could be a goal under engaged communities. We could talk about, uh, school, you know, schools, school climate, engaged...
And it could become a goal under community, and we define it as internally, internal community. Okay, as long as we, as long as we find a, a pillar where we capture those people.
Okay. All right.
So you want to keep it at community, just the word community, or you want to add another word that talks about our people? You just, just leave it as engaged community, and you're considering us as community, every, okay, right. That's fine, I agree, I agree.
Because if, if you had said, yes, I was going to ask a couple of questions as, as it relates to that.
Yeah, they're part of our community.
Yeah, I think there's...
That was going to be one of my questions.
I think there's a lot of room for improvement in the goals and for incorporating what everybody wants underneath it. Because I think the goals, they talk about stakeholders. Throughout Leon County schools, we don't touch on internal versus external, so there may be some room for, for some massaging of the goals within community, but I think community covers it, that's just, just not twenty, twenty percent over here.
I'll follow that away when we, when we get to that point. So let's talk about the victories. Victories under engaged community.
I put one that I think, um, is a big one this year, but it hasn't really happened yet, but you guys saw that, you know, when Sue Dick came and talked to us about the chamber, and we've been talking for years about getting our business community more involved, some of them are, some of them aren't, but they are launching the Adopt a Kindergarten Classroom Initiative. So I think that is a great example of something we've been talking about for years, and they're like, kind of officially launching it under, I really believe Jay Smith is a huge spearhead of that, because he's been a supporter of our schools for, for a long time.
Yeah, I said the same thing, that, you know, the new partnerships with Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce and United Way and many other civic and faith, faith-based organizations.
My victory was the creation of the pandemic reopening of schools task force.
That was good, too.
That was good.
Say that again?
We had a, what, reopening of schools task force.
They have a number of new advisory committees. Mm-hmm, I had that. Like ESE and...
Yes. Yes.
Now, you said we have a number of new advisory committees. That the victory or the fact that they are functioning and effective?
This is a victory. We, we, we actually asked for them, ESE engagement, preschool, I mean, pre-K.
Okay, functioning?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
They're not here, but they're functioning.
Right.
They're not here to inform.
He, he used another word, effective.
They come, they come frequently.
Always that word in progress.
They're new. They're new.
They're new.
No, I mean, no, it's not that they wouldn't have been here, we just didn't invite them to be a part of this conversation. I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Okay. But they will be asked to gleaned of information later on, Mr. Jones, so they can have had input into this document.
Well, they should look at the draft strategic plan. Ask, we should ask for their input.
Okay. Other victories?
Still looking my wounds.
I can see, I have big days in my purse.
Okay.
Other victories?
We're teasing each other.
Yeah, these advisory councils are this sore subject right now.
I said new. We have two new, brand-new advisory councils.
No, I think before, I don't, I, was Title One Advisory Council created before this was...
Title One was created...
Before this was written?
She first ran.
Who's she?
This, this person.
Right, it was created before that or after that?
Right around the time.
Around the time.
Yeah, so, I mean, so it's not, since, since this was written, Title One probably came into existence, ESE.
That's right.
Early childhood.
That's right.
ESE and early childhood have come on since I've been elected.
Right.
Those are the new.
And DSE is the one that's been around for a long time.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, those are victories. Other victories?
Well, they cert, our community certainly feels free to come and tell us what they think. Is that engaged?
About that.
Is that their victory? I don't know.
I thought the, um, the Period Project this year was a great example of student engagement. That's the first time we've ever had a student board member that actually had a implemented action. We're going to do this from, from beginning of, well, not beginning of the school year, I guess it was about halfway through when she did that, but that was impressive. It'd be awesome to see our school board member every, every time, do a student, a student, it's probably not, you're probably right. You're right.
Yeah, the voting.
This one is very, Madeline, there you go.
Madeline with the Voters Initiative.
That's a good one, yeah.
Mad, the Madeline Resolution.
This is true.
So we just...
Madeline, I believe it is.
Madeline, continue to, yes.
I think if we embrace and...
But I think if, if one of our victories is the engaged student population, though. You think about the long-going Leon High School, but Leon High School and their continued, uh, not continued, continued investment, I mean, of, um, fund, I mean...
Fundraising.
Fundraising for TMH, I mean...
Well, child, I mean, Bickers, they all have.
Lincoln, they can be...
But I think that's a victory, an engaged student population.
Yeah, I would agree.
And, you know, and as we talk about, uh, and I put down open communication from the public, as you, you talked about the comments that were made by public. Uh, and, you know, we have to always recognize that we will hear some things that we want to hear and hear some things that we don't want to hear, uh, but as I tell...
We allow it.
Right, right, but the, the, on the receiving end, as I tell my marketing students, when you have, in the... you have, in the business setting, when you have customers and consumers, you know, you always want to hear from those who are not always saying, great job, because you cipher through.
Do people actually come here and say that?
A few times they have.
Yeah, we had one like one month ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we had two in a row, actually.
We did.
You get some. And, and you know, there are comments when I'm watching, I see some of the, I mean, you, you do receive those. You might, and when your board member and your superintendent, you know, might be overshadowed. But when you hear the, the other comments, you know, you cipher through maybe some of the verbiage and how it's being said. And you try to pick up on, is there something that we can improve on? So when you're in business, you know, that's what, that's what you have to do. And I told my students, I said, if you were an athlete in the, back in those days, if the coach was cussing you out, you cipher through the cussing to get to the instruction, what you could glean and take away. And so, you know, those, those were lessons learned early.
Rocky doesn't let them cut.
Back in the day.
I know, we don't, I know. In, in a public setting, we do not do that. Right? Yes, there's a way to cut that off because we're supposed to be respectful at all times. So we don't do that. But they, you know, some are more emotional than others and may be able to contain whatever emotions they may have. And so it's just always incumbent upon us to sort of cipher through those emotions and grasp onto, is there any meat?
I have another engaged community, and that is our collaboration with our healthcare agencies during the pandemic to inform our activities in the district.
That's excellent.
I think that is, we've really, we've optimized, or rather, our relationships with the healthcare community during the pandemic.
Right, right, right. Very good. And related to all of this, I think we do a pretty good job of being positioned to be open and to receive the community, you know, when they come to us. I, I think we do that well. Yep, we're open to that. Because we want them to feel ownership in, in what we do and the connections that they have to our schools. That's just a part of the.
And then the fundraising, optimizing our fundraising for, to respond during the pandemic. The way we were able to get the community to invest in digital devices, the, the Ballard Company give us money to, to help us with that. So those, those types of optimizing fundraising during the pandemic was also important to us as well.
Internet for All, the foundation.
Yeah, through the foundation, right.
The foundation. We're getting there.
The foundation's never been more active.
Yes.
What I could remember.
I think we're finally there. I, I know it. I think we should give a little kudos to having been on boards.
Kudos, kudos to Mr. Clark.
Absolutely, their board. Great.
It's good, good, good. And you know, I don't.
When you come back, you'll be able to say to maintain, we maintain those relationships that were, you know, either cultivated or there was an increase in cultivation. Because, you know, just as, as Board Chair Boon said, she said, I don't know if we're still in it or, or coming out of it. But whenever we come out of it completely, we still want to be able to have those relationships.
Is it? And you know what? Related to this, I don't know that this is a victory. So just let me put it out there. I would be interested in, in creating a position. Yeah, let's dream big. That's not a victory. That is an ask. Of a, a position that can connect schools and communities in those underrepresented areas, say like a No Shame, a Riley, that may not have that strong parental support and, and what's that other word? Booster involvement so that somebody can help with those business partners.
We have a position.
And, and so that we can continue to, you know, to evangelize. That's the only word I can think of to get us to where, you know, we, we need to be. Some schools are able to, communities are able to do that better than others, you know? So that might not be a victory, but it's on, on my mind.
We'll put that under, who we want to see, like a community engagement coordinator, something to that, to that degree.
Recruit, identify, celebrate, bring them in. They need some money. Y'all come and help, whatever. Okay.
We'll probably need to flush that one out a little bit more.
Yes, sir. I, I hear you. Okay.
As it's, as it's circling through my head. So just to flush it out so that we're clear of what we, what we're saying.
And it will increase the money commitments. Okay? I got you. I got you.
Any other victories? And I'm sure you had a lot during, since March of last year.
We didn't close down a single school. We're talking about victories. You guys, we could, we could fill up, we could fill up the rest of that tablet on victories that, that we had this year. Our teachers had, our district had. Crazy, crazy.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you go back into time pre-COVID and talk about some victories?
Let's get on to the.
Yeah, let's get on to, let's get on to the if we had. We could do victories all day long.
Most of we're in the COVID. Okay.
All right. All right, community engagement.
One more, one more thing to community engagement. The fortifying of relationships through our SBE program. And capitalizing our economic impact in the local community through policy and relationships.
Are you victory? Is that victory? Or is that?
It's victory.
Want more?
We did the.
That's a victory. When we agreed to collaborate with the Office of Economic Vitality to increase the, the vendor pool for the district, that has, that, that will have long-term economic impact for the families that are insured by the, by our public schools.
Thanks to you and Rob McQueen's good work on that. Good work.
Oh, thank you. Thank you all.
Still growing and going.
Takes us all, all of us are involved in that. We all agree. So thank you.
Can I ask a question regarding this resource?
And I know I'm probably about to open up more than Pandora's Box.
Then don't do it.
You said, don't, don't do it. No. So as I read, engaged community. It's not engage community. It's an engaged community. So my question is, when I, how am I supposed to interpret this? Is it that Leon County School District is engaging or is the community engaging? Okay.
I think it's a, I think it's an ebb and flow. I mean, we, we also are engaged with the community.
Ebb and flow.
Ebb and flow, both ways.
Somebody said Ed Angelo.
That was good. That was a good one.
Okay. So an engaged community.
Reciprocal.
Reciprocal. Ebb and flow. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Paramount.
Didn't even open the box. We know what it is.
I took a chance.
One last thing, I think. I know, did I, I'm sorry. But this, I think, but I think, but I'm very, very proud of what was something we did most recently. And that was when we agreed to invest in ingenuity that came from the community with the pop-up preschool concept. I think that is, has a great deal about us that here, outside of the district, someone came to us with a concept that will benefit our, our children. And we saw fit to incent to, to invest in that. I thought that was pretty cool.
Yeah. And as I said, I was just there yesterday. They were across the street from, from Wesson, the church. There were probably 70 or 80 itty-bitties there. Yeah, it was really cool.
Did we give them $10,000 that they asked for?
We didn't. No, we gave them a bus and some other stuff.
Give them a bus.
And it's important to celebrate.
Anyway, we're, we're partnering with them, yes.
That's good.
And I think that type of partnership.
And that kind of reciprocation, too, I think is, that's a good example, I believe, of what we're talking about. Yes.
And it's important to recognize.
Oh, yeah.
Your, your victories, especially since March of last year. And, you know, we've already talked about the comments that many of you received individually and collectively. We need to talk about those victories. So that the public in here, and for your own, as we talked about mental health, for your own mental health. It's, it's important because we could move into the next school year and not have really sat down and thought about, you know, yeah, it was a rough, maybe a rough year. It was. But we had some victories.
You know what? It's funny, and I don't mean to interrupt you because he, he uses this word all the time. What will be your legacy? What will be your legacy? If we don't do, or personally, I feel this way, if I don't do another thing, that, that will be the legacy. What we accomplished from last, from last March. Really.
And we provided options. We provided options for parents.
That's a win-win for anybody who wants to win.
Right.
Just, right, just.
Just saying.
So when, you know, when Board Member Jones said, and I'd have another one.
And I do have another. We created a magnet program at the NIMs Middle School, the law program.
Wow.
And it was, that was engaged with the community, the donations, the physical donations, physical and financial donations from particular lawyers, Darryl Parks included. But then what is now the ongoing engagement with the state attorney and other legal offices. And I am certain that we will have a wonderful relationship at NIMs Middle School with the FSU College of Law.
Absolutely.
And but that type, that's engaged community.
Okay, then I'm going to throw this in. It's really back to academics, but it's the same thing as having that articulated program, pre-K through 12 for students. So if we have a law academy at NIMs, what's the follow-through records? Do those kids still keep getting, this is a little off the subject. We can talk about this another time, but I think we need to really think about that.
It's in the parking lot, though.
No, no, I'm just talking about.
But I think we need to document it so we don't lose it by putting it in the parking lot.
No, I'm talking about when we create magnet programs that work, what's the, what's the follow-through? What's the pipeline? Pre-K through 12. And so it probably goes under the academic goal.
Did we talk about the wraparound school? I took a, a break.
No, we didn't.
We didn't mention that. Isn't that one of our?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. That's, that's a big one. That's really big. Got some calls about that yesterday. Just never stop to think about the wonderful things we do. We get all those.
So did I, did I hear another victory?
Yes, yes. What do we call it?
Establishment of a community partnership school at Sable Farm.
Okay, partnership school, not the wraparound school.
Well, same thing.
A community partnership school establishes wraparound services in conjunction with FSU.
Yes, that's it. That's it.
I mentioned it under student achievement, but I don't know if this bears mention.
Can't hear you.
When we talk about, when we talk about engaged community, I think it's important that we also talk about fortifying path, career pathways for our people, our young people to a career and technical education, which is going to require the collaboration with both the business community, the chambers of commerce, and other business stakeholders in our community whereby we can achieve that. And I'm also interested in establishing a career and technical high school in the district.
Wow. You know, there was a semblance of that left somewhere in the past that could be Godbe. It was at Godbe for years. I think, I think it's still there. So it may not be so hard to restart it or to.
And the business community, and the, and the workforce community is demand, I mean, the need is greater now than ever.
It is.
And both, and both in particular targeted industries.
So do we need to put dates on these things so they're not dropped between the cracks? Well, but we're listening, we're listening.
Superintendent's the one that.
I know. I do know.
Y'all keep jumping out of the plane.
Well, I want to make certain that this is a memorial, that is included.
Right.
Right. I'm also interested in us fortifying our relationship with Innovation Park to create, uh, uh, science academies. At our schools.
Sounds like a couple more positions to me.
Okay, what else do we want to see? We're visioning now.
Oh, we, we're moving.
Oh, we are?
Okay. I have three.
That's what's been going on about the last three or four minutes. That's why it's in blue.
So you, so you've taken that, you've, you've created a brand new type of index for the?
This is if we had. We're on that part.
Oh, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, because you're saying what we want for the future.
You're saying, I want to fortify.
Make sure you weren't going to cut the blue ones off and just keep the black ones.
No, 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 no.
Darryl, I don't know why you're afraid of being left out. You're never going to be left out.
It's on the, it's, it's written in permanent ink, so it's there.
Just one has three.
I have three.
Okay.
It's sort of back to that evaluation piece, but I think we need to do a better job of surveying our constituency when we make decisions. Okay. Surveying our constituencies when we make decisions, which includes the climate survey, which we didn't have this year. And I understand there, you know, we had COVID this year, so I'll give that a pass. But we didn't do a real climate survey with our, I think that's so important because the school climate determines everything. And it's the way you get data that is anonymous and people can feel free to say what they need to say. So.
Excuse me, just one second. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You said to.
There's two things really in there. One is to really utilize our climate surveys.
Okay.
And the second is to do more surveying in general when we make, are going to make big decisions.
Okay. So with that, you would need to define big decisions.
Okay.
And how often, now, this gets back to the previous pillar in terms of resources and the allocation of resources to do surveys. So if you have, I don't know, six, seven, eight major decisions, you're talking about six to eight surveys. So you have to, just, just, just to keep that in mind and as superintendent's look, superintendent's staff is looking at that.
Okay, I'll give an example that's very pertinent right now, and we can talk about it more in our workshop. When we make a decision, superintendent makes a decision about what we're going to do with masks or no mask. Okay, that's a big decision, affects a lot of people. How do we get the information from our constituents to make sure we're making the right decision? Or that they feel that they got a chance to be heard on a subject like that? We did it on buses, you know, bus times. What time, we can change the buses. So I just think utilizing that methodology more, people, we'd get a, a better feel for how people feel. Because what we get now are the complainers, are the people who love your decision. But it's hard to get that middle group that'll just, they, they may complain at home, but they're not going to sit down and write us an email or come to a board meeting. I would like us to, I would like the superintendent and his staff to do more of that so we can inform our decisions, you know, surveying the teachers, surveying the parents. And we have an ability to do that through technology. That's not like those big old surveys you had to hire a company to come in and do. You can send out a, a two-minute survey and just get the pulse on how people feel about things that are really going to affect them. So I feel like we lack that. And sometimes we step in it and we don't need to because we could realize that this is only 3% of the people who feel this way. But it feels like, it feels like 80% because of the feedback you get.
And part of the feedback that I got, Ms. Woods, regarding that was when we were calling on the community to assist us and how we wanted to go about masking and the kinds of things we wanted to do to be safe. We asked the community about that. And now, why didn't you all ask us about to mask or not to mask? That's what I got. Two days in Publix about this. So I just say that. I hear you.
In general, I think we should do more of that. And my third thing is, I think we should do more marketing of our successes and to go back to that original goal of desegregation and so forth is. Is informing the community about what's available and what's possible, and. So maybe it needs a separate, whole separate goal, but.
We said it, it happened.
We, we started it, we started it, and we have a person in charge of it, but I think, you know, setting clear goals so of what our priorities are. Because you can't do everything, I mean, we can market a thousand things, but what are our priorities? Are we trying to, you know, work on? Anyway, I just think we need to focus our marketing.
I agree, I think we need to mark, I think we need to do a better job of marketing our magnet programs.
Exactly.
And I know I've talked about that, I know we talked about it prior to school choice. I am an engaged and I think relatively well-informed member of this community, and yet I'm still very much, I mean, I think I've, I, we, after we've talked about it, I know Dr. Gill shared with us. The magnet programs that we have at our different schools, but I think that our community is very much unaware still of those options. I just would love to see us market that more. I am, I'm interested in surveys for data, but I'm not interested in surveys to govern. I will not be bullied by surveys because surveys are not always accurate representations of how people feel. Surveys are based upon oftentimes people's emotional investment in the issue at hand, and so some people may feel confident in a decision we make, but they just, or, or, or regarding an issue. But choose not to participate in the survey, and if we let surveys guide us in terms of policymaking and governance, I think we, I think we head down a slippery slope. That's just.
That's another way to look at it.
That's, that's just my, because I may, I, I have strong opinions on any issue that you would dare bring up, and when they ask me, would you like to take a survey, the answer is always no. I don't want to devote my time to a survey, and, and that doesn't mean I didn't have a strong opinion, but it will not be registered because I wouldn't have to say it in a survey.
And I think the question is, and I agree with, with Ms. Woods about the, we want to know how our people are feeling, but a lot of times when you do these surveys, all you get are the people that aren't feeling, the people that are upset. So how do we get effectively capture what the entire group is, is feeling? You know, how do we, how do we go about doing that? Do we incentivize everyone to participate? Because most people, if they're happy, they're like, I'm good, I'm good.
I'm good.
You know, how do we, how do we do that? How do we capture everyone when we go to get feedback? You know, the good, the bad, the ugly.
Right.
If the attempt is worthwhile, I just don't know that it should be used to govern.
Climate surveys, same thing.
Yeah, and then the other piece, when you say, I don't know about the magnet programs. What, how do we, what, what is it? You know, what, and I guess, I guess Heather needs to figure that over, Heather, Dr. Gill, whoever, our marketing people need to figure that out. Are we assuming that if you're a parent and you have a child that's about to enter middle school? That if you want to find the information, I think you can find it. That it's incumbent upon then the parent to say, well, at Cobb, they have the, this program, and at NIMs, they have the law program, and at this. Or are we gonna be, you know, send stuff out, and then what is the mechanism by which to do that, right?
To me, it depends on what the goal is, like, if you're trying to, most magnet programs are for, they have been in the past, a lot of them have been for desegregation. They have been, let's try to bring some more students into this school, mix up the population more. And so if that's one of your goals, then you look at the ones who have a chance to do that, and you have a clear path and a clear marketing strategy, and you let people know about it for that goal. You know, that's how I see it, and the whole magnet thing. And you have to have a K through 12, pre-K through 12 vision, so the parents, you know, see that. And like a, a, a career high school, so if you want to, if you want to go to the career high school, if we had one, you know, you would enroll at this program. And if, you know, you would have, be prepared, just like if you have a law program, there should be something that leads to when you go to the feeder school, which is Records, to keep going. And it's not just a, like a middle school, that's how I see it. We don't have that in this district, we don't have a clear path if you want to pursue something. And that was a big complaint, you know, because we have them at the middle schools, but we don't necessarily have a.
At the high school?
Path at the high school.
And my arts and rock.
And then we've got three high schools that haven't got any room for anybody, so we can't really, you know, trying to attract more kids to that school because they're already over capacity. So you're really working on, in high schools, we have two, two high schools that don't have full enrollment, so how can we? To me, that should be our focus, how do we get, how do we market those so that people see a pathway, can go all the way through, that's very attractive and appealing?
And that's where Superintendent Hannah, Hannah made, he hit the nail on the head when he said it's the, the how. You know, how, we have great program, magnet school A. How do we get that information in front of those who need to hear and see that message? And, you know, and, and he's right, you know, because he said, how, how do you do it? Well, you know, you have multiple ways of doing it, obviously, some ways are gonna be more cost-effective than others. And then you have to know the, the people that you're sending it to. You know, what communication mode are they more likely to? Either read, view, hear, then, I mean, you, you, you know, and again, like he said, that's.
Supermarket.
That goes back to Ms. Thomas' area of, of the marketing, because you have to know who you're speaking to. Could be a great, great program, great message, graphics are great, content is great, and it's not getting into, to anyone. It's like an email, the average, you know what the average time spent reading an email, when you start sending out things through email? Anybody want to take a guess what the average time spent on an email?
Twenty-five seconds.
Twice as much, I mean, 20 times as much, 41 seconds. If you write a three-paragraph essay, it's not happening. So, I mean, those are the things, you know, so again, you know, they, they have to figure, and, and I can tell you. Trying to get an understanding of the population, the psychographic makeup of the pop, that's not easy. But it will, it will, it will require some time, and when it's not easy and it's not as clear, it might be trial, a little bit of trial and error, a little bit of hit and miss. But you have to be, talking about fiscal stewardship that we're gonna talk about at the end, but you still need to be fiscally responsible as you're proceeding with that type of action plan. But, you know, it's, it's, I've heard marketing, I think in every pillar. Marketing of the word, marketing has, has come up, and obviously, that's it, but like I said, how? And that's what he's, you know, he, he's saying that, you know, how do we do that? And that's not easy, and they have to work through that.
Okay, those are my three, y'all go ahead.
Okay. That's it? Six. Two people have spoken, three apiece. I'm good at math, too. That it? We're good? I think Ms. Chair Borman's at, said it a few times when she opened up, all hearts and minds are clear, right? Okay, we're moving on to. We, let me see, we covered everything in the parking lot, we discussed the, the title, we did, we did all of that, right? Okay, last one. Fiscal stewardship and transparency.
Victories.
Audit.
Our audit findings have been.
Incredible, good.
Exemplary.
Exemplary.
Say, our superintendent knows how to squeeze blood out of turnip. Very good at managing our fiscal resources.
And our CFO, shout out to Ken Banks.
Yes.
During this.
She's a victory.
She's a victory.
That CFO is a victory?
Yes, she is.
Definitely.
You'd like to paint a picture for the public?
You know, what did she do, I mean, what?
Well, since she's been here, the audit findings have reduced from what they were at one year when I was here, and slowly dwindled down to zero. But she's also very forthcoming, if you ask her anything about how money was spent, federal, you know, during COVID. She sends you information, justification, she's also good at finding funds and spending them where they need to be spent, she's creative. I, I mean, I can't say enough, you know, she's. She is probably primarily responsible for the reason we are as financially healthy as we are. We didn't think anyone could top Merrill, and.
Merrill said it pretty good.
Merrill, yeah, we, Merrill.
You had a good foundation.
Yeah, she had a great foundation, but she is, yeah, I think she.
She's fairly new, so they're very pleased that she's been able to acclimate as fast as she has and then, you know, run.
She had big shoes to fill.
Any victories on, and you can.
I have a victory on transparency.
Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm also happy that we were able to successfully negotiate a, a RFP process for the selection of a brand, of our, of our school board attorney.
Good catch.
We have not, traditionally are not involved in such processes, and I think we were able to navigate that process seamlessly and to bring on. Our school, to manage the school board attorney contract.
I agree with that wholeheartedly, Mr. Jones.
Okay.
Another fiscal stewardship issue is that we were able to have the monies in reserve to mitigate the shortfalls that we have. Based upon taxable revenue made available to the district following, in the throes of a pandemic. And that's the super and the CFO together. I don't know if this, although we cited this in other areas, but the $10 million investment in Chromebooks that we would be on one old one district is also an issue of fiscal stewardship as well. To have been able to make that decision and be able to make that purchase to have what we know has been an important impact in our ability to provide instruction during this pandemic.
Superintendent, what are you proud of on this?
I, you know, so I wrote down on, on my, I won't say the grade that I give, and I rarely give grade myself high, I usually give myself a C. Or, but I put too many financial accomplishments to list in one sentence.
Well, we're getting some of them.
There are a lot of them, there really are. The way that money has been channeled to the schools has been phenomenal, I think.
Well, and we've given significant pay increases to our teachers and support staff.
Pay increases.
Substitute teachers, we've even strengthened our emergency reserve, I mean, there's just.
And I think responding to the compression issue, not only just the pay increases, but the compression, I mean, is that, is that, is that a part of that too? Being able to, or make the award to new teachers, but then be able to deal with the issues of compression too?
Well, we, yeah, and we still have some work to do there.
There's a whole list of them. And they're, you know.
Yeah, there are, there are, I mean, like I said, we, I could.
Okay.
There's a ton of them, I think the, the, the biggest win for us was to push more resources than ever, than ever, than not, mostly ever. To push. Significant, a significant amount of resources down to our schools and our classrooms. And that was, you know, with flexible spending, the furniture money, the arts and athletics money, the. To our, to our classrooms and to our employees.
Staffing plans, you know, have been beefed up. Key to a school is the staffing plan.
Visioning, what do we want to see?
More of the same.
More of the same.
Okay, I'm gonna say it again, we need an evaluation specialist. To ensure that we're getting the most bang for our buck, especially in curriculum materials. We spend a lot of money on curriculum programs.
And so I, and I wrote, so I wrote someone to help manage contracts and ensure we are getting the best deals possible. Jane, I, I really agree, and we just brought a young lady on, Casey, Kim brought her in. It's who's, yeah, she's, she's gonna really help in this area across the district.
She's talking about.
Procurements, contracts.
I'm talking about effectiveness in terms of like instructional materials.
Yeah, but Casey will be able to stretch from maintenance to transportation parts to instructional materials to, she's, she'll be evaluating.
Contract performance.
Contract performance, procurements, things like that.
Okay, it's a little different than what I'm talking about, but I, I hear what you're saying. I'm talking more about effectiveness.
The effectiveness of programs.
Yes.
Of, of materials that we buy, yes.
Yeah, so if one school is using one program, or one school's using another, and we find out, you know, that this other program that, that, we're doing better, that we are a little more directive about saying, hey, you know what? We're gonna use this because this proved to be more effective. And I think sometimes, again, I hate to keep saying the same thing over and over, but some, someone who's not attached to the department that runs that is a better person to say it.
Well, this depend upon the demographics of the school.
A little more removed, that directly reports to you and say, you know, looking at the whole organization, the effectiveness of different departments and so forth.
Okay, so you were not talking about demographics in particular, you're talking about the overall scheme of, okay, I got you.
No, I'm just talking about.
Okay.
Where we're effective and where we're not, and someone who has that hat on that's looking throughout the school district and is telling you and us specifically.
So when you talk about the effectiveness, you're talking, I'm hearing you say the effectiveness of the program, but also cost-effectiveness. I think Superintendent Hannah said bang for the buck.
Yeah.
Because this is the fiscal stewardship and transparency, so I want to make sure.
You're right, I was, I was actually talking more broadly.
Okay.
Honestly, but, but the fiscal part would be which, which programs are working and which aren't, and, and also what he said, which I hadn't really thought about, but that's real important, too.
So you, are you back to the, the district data or analytics person?
Yeah.
Right?
I'm just sticking it in everywhere I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a quality TQ theme in there, so, okay. What else? That food is setting in now.
You know how to read a room.
Where's the chocolate?
I think two, I think two, in addition to what you've pointed out, the obvious. The circumstances that gave rise to this pillar several years ago don't exist right now because we've done a good job of implementing it, so I think probably.
It's going.
Maybe we're at the end of our.
But we're not thinking of getting rid of it, are we?
No, 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 no.
I'm gonna add one positive, I, I think we have really lost. I think we have really lost a lot of the politicization of using our fiscal resources.
How do you mean? I'm sorry.
Just mean there's, it's, everything seems to be really fair. I'm not gonna go there. But I think, I think, you know, things are very transparent, so that's what I'm really trying to speak to that point. In our procurement process. And I feel good about that.
Do you think, oh, this is gonna get me in trouble? That's how, how we're feeling as board members, you think that the general, general population, constituent staff and others feel that way as well? Do we dare say that?
Yeah, because we need to hear about it.
I'm just, justin.
It just seems like things are really transparent in a way that they haven't been.
May I offer this as a, something I'd like for us to do? I'd like for us to capitalize on our proximity, our relationship with state government to optimize financial resources identified for the district. Being in such close proximity, we should be able, I, I, there, there, as we can imagine that federal resources and their emphasis and placement in education will change, I want us to be able to optimize that, those opportunities to bring additional, identify additional financial resources for the district.
And along those lines, we've had conversations before about having a grants person. But I would say that we, kind of along that same vein, look for opportunities for outside funding sources through grants and things like that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What we want to see is...
Are you saying add a grants person, Rocky?
Grant writer?
A grant writer.
Well, I'm not saying we're going to, but I'm just saying that we need to look at how we can increase...
Alternative funding sources.
Alternative funding sources, yeah, through grants and other...
And I think Darryl was saying like piggyback on contracts that we can.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about contracts, which certainly grants and other alternative sources of funding for both the federal and state government.
Yeah.
All right, I want to get back to the discussion of the politicizing of financial...
No, I really don't want to.
You don't want to? Okay.
I take it back.
Okay.
Our transparency has been accomplished.
Our transparency has been accomplished. And I feel really good about it, that's what I meant to say.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
I think we're done.
I think you have lost.
The glaze of the eyes.
I think the cake is good.
Two thirty-three o'clock, that's about what we had forecast.
Adult learners.
You think it's better for the students? Okay.
Man, I saw the bill would have already run.
A long time ago. Buildings would be clear. Okay. You've done a great job looking at your victories, you know, for, because again, you know, it's always good to sort of wrap up the document that you have. You've given a lot of insight, food for thought for each other and definitely for Superintendent Hannah and his leadership, leadership team. Again, they will take the information that you have given them along with other data to formulate the, to formulate the, the goals. Obviously, we talked about some of the goals today and write the goals and the objectives, take a look at their, maybe we'll take a look at their action plans. We will reconvene, I think there's a tentative date we're looking at so that discussion will be had amongst all of you along with Dr. Gail. And then, you know, to take a look at what they have developed to make sure, 23rd?
August, August 23rd.
Yeah, August 23rd, that afternoon.
So I think what she was, maybe talk about doing it before in a gender review, like that morning, and then just instead of burning two days, if you're gonna come that morning and then we can do this and then roll into an agenda review.
What will we be looking at? The draft of the new strategic plan, the new goals and objectives.
And will that, what will that include? Who will have had input into that? I know what we're doing today. Dr. Gail, who will have had input into that document prior to our seeing it on the 23rd or whenever you get it to us, please?
Bless you.
Bless you.
Yes, ma'am. So staff will be aware of all of these notes, they'll be able to look at the recording. Members of them right now are on the broadcast. We'll also have an opportunity to talk to our district advisory council to get input from the public and also our administrators to get input from them. All of this will go into a draft of the strategic plan, all of your information to bring back to you.
Okay. Go ahead. No, 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 I, I, that was fine, I think. I was listening for a community and I'm sure I heard it and I just...
District advisory council.
Okay, district advisory council.
There is, I know we always are talking about concerns, continuing concerns, new concerns. I'm certainly guilty of that, but then there are some, I, I, I'd also like, I don't know if we have captured everyone's long-term plans for the district as we talk about a reimagined school district. So I, and it may not fall in the pillars, but there may be some long-range stuff that we'd like to see the district do that we may not have captured in the conversation here. That may go to the parking lot for further review, future agenda items, but something that's not, that we're not talking about in the immediacy of the school year, but maybe something that we will forecast, get more information about that we may not have mentioned, that we haven't captured any one of those pillars. And I thought maybe we might find time to talk about that too. Stuff that would populate that parking lot.
On the 23rd.
Well, although on the 23rd, we share it now and we come back, that information come back to us on the 23rd or, or something like that. Because I, and I just, and I, as old, well, no, I'm not gonna say what my grandmother would say because that's a little off color, but...
I know, don't say it, don't say it.
I'm interested, and I know that y'all have dealt with this because all of you predate me. I'm interested in what could possibly, and I'm not talking about you. I'm gonna be very clear, I'm not talking about the individual. I'm talking about when, after we're done, after you have rolled off into the sunset and all of that. But I wanna, I'm interested in us having conversations about an appointed superintendent. And I know that y'all have dealt with that in the past, but times have changed, perceptions have changed. And one of the things I continue to talk about ever since I got...
Well, he did shift gears.
I have, and I know...
Everybody woke up.
But I didn't nod today, I promise. I'm right there, but I haven't quite...
Honestly, no.
You cleared her throat. But I'm interested in us, I don't know, and I don't know the method by which that occurs.
Have to have money for a campaign.
So I don't know, I want that in the parking lot? Right? As a long-term, as a discussion that occurs long-term. I'm not talking about anything right now. I might not even be here next August, who knows? But, but, yeah, put, which...
Put a ring on it.
Put a ring on that, right? And I'm, and I, and I, as another issue of concern, I want us, in terms of long-term work, put emphasis on our most vulnerable student populations. Our kids with special needs. We are, we are, we continue to talk about that reading crisis and student preparedness. I think that part of that will be answered in that new position, I believe y'all described, the multi-tiered. We'll deal with some of that. I'd love to learn more in terms of what we see as the long-term implications of that type of approach. But I'm, 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 I, I, of course, I'm always talking about our Title I schools, but I also think about those other vulnerable student populations and the impacts that are, that they're dealing with as well. So those are my parking lot stuff that doesn't necessarily go into those pillars possibly, but I would like to know about and their long-term implications.
Duly noted in writing. All right, well, thank you, you have been great. Didn't have to pull information out of, out of you. You're pressing, oh, well, yeah. I've done this a few years and there's some boards like, they said, they gave me like the dentist tools because they said you're going to pull teeth to get information. And I knew that wouldn't be the case. So it was great dialogue, great information. But I, again, just allow Superintendent Hannah and his, and his team, you know, that time and that space to, you know, review the information, think about the information, put together that first draft and that hundredth draft as they go back and forth to, to really discuss it and then bring it back, bring it back to you. And even when we come back, again, remember the airplane, try to stay at the 50,000-foot level and let the superintendent and his staff put together the actual action plan and the action items that will be associated with that. So, and I, I've said that when I did training when I was a board member, and I said it after I was a board member. So, you know, I'm just a believer in that, that it would just be more harmonious. And as I said, the last thing is that we want to make sure we have unity, not just among the board, but you want to have unity with your superintendent and his staff.
The superintendent counts on us to tell him how to do his job.
He promptly ignores us, but it's okay.
He tolerates a lot. He tolerates a lot, he does, he does.
Imagine if he was appointed.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
I guess all hearts and minds were not clear.
Denver.
Good one, good one, good one.
You have to be able to smile and you have to be able, you have to enjoy.
We can do that, yeah.
What you're, what you're doing, especially what you endured and as, as Board Member Bois said, hopefully coming out of and into some more unknowns, right? Okay?
Can I offer this?
Yes, sir.
And one of the things I, and I want to say this as a part of this strategic plan outside of the context of a school board meeting. And I hope that our public appreciates this since we are public. You can tell from our conversation that everybody has their particular heels that matter to them. And I think sometimes, although the particular, particular school board member may stand on a hill, it does not mean that we do not all stand on that hill with them. We feel confident in their advocacy. I love Title I, I talk about Title I ad nauseam every meeting. There's not gonna be a meeting that we come together where you'll not hear me say Title I. Although, school board member Striplin, who does not have Title I schools in our district, is just as avid a supporter of Title I as I am in both her most recent vocation as well as her service and in her, even in her perspective, but I'm the one who gets to talk about it. And I think it's that type of harmonious collegiality and the diversity of the things that matter to us, whether it's pay increases or security, all right? Everybody has equity and cultural diversity and making certain that schools at the onsite administrators are well-equipped, everybody's got their heels, but together we come together, even in the context of this work right here, to be able to craft what we believed is the most, is a district, the best imagined school district possible. And we're forever thinking about that. And that's what makes our coming together so extraordinary and that we share that type of respect and collegiality. So this time, although I've had my complaint at the very beginning, still this has been time well spent.
Good, good, all right.
What I would say, you know, who remember Jones echoes, he just said it differently. I always tell boards and organizations that you might have a name on the back of your jersey, and that's what he talked about, you know, that's that hill. And it's like any athletic team or football team, someone, you may have a player who plays offense, their best friend may play defense, but the office is rooting for and supporting the defense and vice versa. But at the yet, not but, yet at the end of the day, only one team has a score and only one team wins. So you can score 50 points on offense, but if you give a 51 on defense, the team on the front of the jersey, right there, Leon County Schools, is the winner or the loser. So no matter, that's what, that's what he was saying, no matter what hill you stand on, you support each other and at the end of the day, you come together for Leon County Schools because that name on the front of the jersey is the only name that counts, not the name on the back of the jersey. So you've done, you've done a great job, and I knew that you would because I've watched you on, on live stream and I, and I knew this would be a good group. I knew you would get everything accomplished.
Yes, we did.
And we got through all five, Dr. Gail.
I tell you.
We got through all five.
Yes, yes, we did, yes, we discussed that.
She almost had me convinced, we're gonna need, basically, we might need another day. I said, we'll get through all five. So, job well done.
Mr. Braggins, may I just say, thank you, thank you, thank you. You've done an outstanding job today.
Thank you.
And it's great to know that you see that we are in fact Team Leon. And your presence here today did nothing but to unify us in the diversity of thought that we had, and we feel so good that you were here, okay? We really appreciate you. And we look forward to coming back on the 23rd of August when we shall finish this, okay?
I'll see you on the 23rd.
Yes, and we're not quite just through yet. We still have to listen from our, to our attorney on some, the way of work, don't we? On Monday, so we, oh, see, we're still running, we're about to be done. All minds clear? Then I think we ought to go.